I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, board members and public and everyone else, and especially Jenny Guthrie. Did you drive here? You are rocking. For those of you who don't know, Jenny was sick for quite some time. And so it is so good to see you recovered over the summer. And I guess you just got to go north there, you know, for three or four, about a month every year.
I'm a little red.
There you go.
It's a little nature.
There you go. We may have some people from the community here today. I've committed myself to want to remind everyone of number nine in your agenda. Unscheduled audience participation. There are some rules there about how we do that audience participation. There are some cards, I actually got one already, that are over on that counter over there. And if you would fill it out, read through the rule section, and have them submitted to Angela as you can get them to me. And then when we get to number nine, it can kind of be orderly, and we can go through that process in the best way. We need an acting secretary. Heather, will you do that for us, please?
Yes, sure.
All right, and so would you please take attendance?
I will. President Donnelly?
I'm here.
Vice President Brasington?
She's on today.
Okay. Secretary Steppak?
He will not be here.
Trustee Bailey?
Here.
Trustee Delafangro? Trustee Shaper?
Here.
Trustee Guthrie?
Here.
All right, very good. Any changes to the board agenda?
Mark Dr. Brasington here.
Ah, very good.
No changes.
All right, no changes. Consent agenda, minutes of August 14th. Would someone like to make that motion? Who's got it?
Move to approve the consent agenda, ask for it presented.
Support. Support Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged requests were addressed to board. Oxford Crossroads update for the new school year. He's light on his feet?
Yes, sir. Thanking board for letting me come off tonight. I just presented to you in June, so I don't have a presentation for it. But I do want to give you a couple of updates in regards to what we're doing over at Crossroads. We had a great start to the year. First thing I wanted to say is that this is the first year I started the school year without having to hire a new teacher. We've had a lot of turnover out there. Truly believe I have a team in place that will stay with me for years to come, which, if you know about my population, consistency is so important. And having a consistent staff and, you know, consistent smiling faces every day, well, mostly smiling faces every day, you know, sometimes we get crabby, all of us, not me, though. To be glad, you know, having some consistent staff every year is good for my kids. So I'm really happy that I have the staff I have in place. Second, I've been working with Tony Sarkins since last year about some security updates to our building. We now have a closed locked front door with a buzzer system camera access, which was a big deal to us. My students are subject to search before they enter the building from their units. There's never been a concern from a student perspective for me. There's always been a concern because we have a lot of traffic in regards to DHHS workers, probation officers, and people coming to see students at the building. And I encourage that, but I also want to make sure it's safe. So I don't know all of the DHHS workers, nor do I know all the probation workers in the tri-county area. So having that buzzer system is a big step up for us security-wise. Makes my, you know, my secretary in that field stations where the first people they see when, you know, people come into the building. So that's a big deal for us. Also, working with Tony Sarkins and another security company getting new locks put on our doors. We're going to pilot a new automatic lock system, key fob type thing, no key entry to our classrooms. That's in the works, it should be done in a couple of weeks. So I know a couple of board members have come out and seen these, so hopefully those locks will be in. If you haven't been out to Crossroads, it's a one-hall school hall, so we can pilot stuff like that, like looking into the future to see if that's something like a bigger building would benefit from. So that's also a big deal for us as well from a building standpoint. Also, I presented our community program back in June. That's our tuition-based program for surrounding school districts with long-term suspended or expelled students with special needs. I'm just happy to say that we have six students starting in our community program. And we have two referrals in the pipeline, which not only is, you know, the revenue part of it is awesome for the district, you know, it's kind of cool, it's like a new way to generate revenue for our district, that's one thing. But the most important thing is that we are offering a free and appropriate public education for students that cannot get it in their resident district. I mean, I can't tell you when I was an assistant principal in Romeo, how many times I was stuck when I had a student with an IEP that got in trouble and saying, you know, just saying, "Let's go to the library for two hours a week with a tutor," and calling that a free and appropriate public education is just, it just doesn't do it. So my building, my people have the ability to offer faith to students that made a poor choice, or just, you know, aren't doing well in a large population building, like a larger high school or a larger middle school. We are smaller, we have smaller class sizes, all of my teachers are special ed certified and are highly effective in, or I'm sorry, highly effective. They are highly qualified in the content areas. So it's just, it's kind of, it's what's best for kids, and that's what I preach, it's what I really make all my choices for. So I'm glad that community program is growing, and I don't see it going anywhere. So I will keep you updated on that as the year goes on. And the last thing about success is we got three kids in my boot camp that are potential graduates at the semester time. They're well on track. We got, you know, fingers crossed, they will be, we will be having a celebration around the end of January for three graduates of Oxford schools. You guys will all be invited to that celebration as well. Is there any questions for me?
Great job.
You guys have a great night.
Board of Education Matters.
So you have one item under there, and that's field trip request form. This is just information only for the board, since this is an ongoing or annual field trip, no prior approval is needed, but we do make it a habit of just informing you and reminding you of those that have, so that's just FYI.
Very good, very good. Mr. Weaver, curriculum and instruction.
Yes, I believe, making sure, the first item up is the presentation of the High School Medical Foundations class. Janal will come up and introduce. Just got to log in here, the computer shows that Janal is trying to reboot, I guess, so to speak. It is back up and going, so we're just finishing the last touches on giving everything up, so just bear with us for a minute.
Board members, how about if we jump to number seven, get that done? We saw this information last meeting anyways. So Mr. Burnham, you have a grinder pump sewer easement sale for about $1.
That is correct, yes, and we're looking for a recommendation for action for the ability for myself to sign the agreement.
All right, so would one of the, yes, Dr. Brasington?
Move to approve the grinder pump sewer easement agreement with actual ownership, that the total cost of one of those?
Is there support? Mr. Guthrie, is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Janal is going to be presenting the medical foundations, it seems to be the Biomet Program. We now kind of refer to it, it's taking a while to get all the new names in and everything. The course is actually Medical Foundations, with health services being the CTE track that it would be under. So here, she's been working, her and Anne Bolton, unfortunately, will not be with us this year. She's a high school teacher, science teacher last year, fantastic teacher as well. Janal, was last year was your first year, correct?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, and she's fantastic as well, heard nothing but great things about her as well. The two of them worked to develop the curriculum for the last year. Unfortunately, Anne got a position with Oakland Schools, a little bit closer to home for her and everything, so we wish her the best, but she was fantastic. She actually came back and helped finish the curriculum, so we'll go ahead and let her present.
All right. Good evening, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm excited to present this curriculum. As Ken mentioned, it's been a long time in the running this last year, and I think it's really going to benefit our students, not only with the content, but with the accessibility, with the way the program works, and how many students should be able to really get this opportunity to take these classes, because we have shown a lot of interest in the medical field from our students here at Oxford. So if you're familiar with the previous PLTW coursework, it was a four-year track. Years one and year two covered our 12 segments that the CTE pathway required. What we've done is we've combined years one and year two and kind of taken out some of those concepts covered in other classes like biology, and we've combined them into what we call Medical Foundations, that focuses on all 12 of those segments in one year. We did remove freshmen from the class, so biology was that prerequisite for the course. So now we have sophomores through seniors able to take Medical Foundations, and then from there, they have other opportunities. We're working at developing some Q-courses for next year, but we also already offered this medical field study opportunity, where students are able to go and intern at local practices in our community during the school day. So we do have that opportunity available to students. Now, currently have 18 students in that class this year. How we broke up the 12 segments, and just so you can get an idea of what Medical Foundations is all about. They're color-coded, so Unit 1 is only career readiness, we thought that was important to have on its own. Unit 2 is healthcare delivery system, so that's going to look at how do patients and providers receive and provide care? What does that look like, how does funding work, things like that? Unit 3 is safety, and it includes both workplace safety, so this is going to include things like OSHA and emergency procedures in hospitals and healthcare settings, but then also infection control. So how can we keep our patients safe, how can we keep our providers safe from the spread of disease? Unit 4 is our legal and ethical responsibilities. This talks about things like healthcare communication and medical terminology. We look at legal responsibilities and ethical issues. This is the unit that we're going to dive a little bit deeper into, so we'll revisit that in a minute. Unit 5 is our ongoing unit throughout the year, it's anatomy and physiology. We scratched the surface of anatomy and physiology. So our students are really just getting an overview of the body systems. We do still offer anatomy and physiology as a course, but it's a science credit, and it goes much deeper into each body system. We encourage students to take both classes, there's not a lot of overlap. Taking anatomy and physiology is going to help them in this class, or pique their interest and kind of encourage them to take that further in their high school track. Unit 6 is our patient care unit, this is what the students get excited about, this is what I get excited about. These are our clinical skills, so these are teaching students how to take a blood pressure, and how to do other vital signs like temperature and respiration rate, and heart rate. Client status is assessing patients, and then health informatics and technology, how do we document this? In this digital world, where we have all these electronic medical records, what does that look like, how do students learn how to interface with that technology source, and make sure that they're documenting all of the practices that are in place? And then our last unit is wellness, so this is going to talk about like healthy behaviors, disease prevention. We save this for last, because we have like a cumulative individual project for the students, that they're going to get a chance to look at their own behaviors and kind of see what they can do to become healthier individuals. Some of the instructional methods that we use, the multimodal approach, so this is taking learning from multiple angles, letting students get, kind of construct their own knowledge through reading, writing, talking, and doing. As you can see in some of the pictures, these were examples from last year's course, but we're going to use a lot of those similar methods. The students are performing labs, and they're doing presentations, they're building models. The picture in the corner is experimental design, the students are coming up with their own methods of, "How do I test?" In that case, it was blood spatter, but something we could do this year is how do we test what changes my heart rate? The students are kind of coming up with that process on their own, thinking about some of those factors that might influence heart rate, and getting that opportunity to test it out and figure out for themselves what's going on. Assessment, so with most of our CT courses that we offer at Oxford, we do have a certification exam at the end. They're considered industry-recognized, so this is from NCHSE, stands for the National Consortium of Health Science Educational Association. And so this is where a lot of our curriculum came from, this is what a lot of other schools in Oakland County are doing. Anne Bolton and I went around, we observed what other teachers, how they put this into place, and the certification exam is considered an introduction to health sciences. So students get that certification upon passing the test, it's something they can put in a resume portfolio, it's something they can put on their college applications, it's kind of a stepping stone to some further options that they might have. And so with that, we thought that within assessment, it's also important that we offer some multiple choice quizzes, I know it's pretty traditional, but it gives them an opportunity to see some of those practice questions. I have a few examples of some of the multiple choice questions, they're actually pretty good multiple choice questions, some of the resources that we were given, and so I think it's going to be a good fit to prepare students for that exam. But also with this class, it's important that we partake in performance tasks with, especially with that clinical skills unit, we want students to be able to perform what they're learning. So it's not necessarily, "Can I circle the answer on the test," but "Can I show you that I can actually do it?" And so with rubrics and lots of practice, this will give the students a good opportunity to demonstrate that. We also have projects, we did integrate this course in with the MIP framework, because we have sophomores in there. So we have three IB summative projects across three different units, as well as some smaller projects that the students are going to be able to incorporate, again, both formative as they're developing those ideas, and summative to kind of show that they've, what they've learned over the course of a unit or a subsection of a unit, and so on. Again, these were some examples from last year, with similar instructional methods, just a little bit different content. So when we look at Unit 4, this was just one we had picked because there was that IB summative assessment that I want to make sure you have the opportunity to take a look at. Like I said, we had clumped together a few of the segments within each unit. This unit, we look at communication. Sometimes it's implied that our students are good communicators, but in CTE, it's really important that we're explicit in teaching them how to communicate. Especially in something like healthcare, where you have patients who are nonverbal, you have patients who might be angry or upset, and that listening aspect is really important. We talk about how communication plays a role in your legal responsibilities, as a provider, you have to listen, including other practices like HIPAA, informed consent, advanced directives, maybe things students have heard about, but we really dive deeper into what those look like. The next little subsection of this unit is ethical practices. So we talk about different ethical principles, we talk about the Hippocratic Oath. We also talk about some upcoming ethical issues and the impact that has on the healthcare community, and kind of the decision-making process. And then lastly, we talk about cultural, social, and ethnic diversity. One thing I'm really excited about this year that I noticed that I didn't have last year is I seem to have a lot more diversity in my classes. And not just social diversity, but even the numbers of girls and boys has improved, as far as getting more students who might not have been in our classes last year, having them in our seats, I think that's really going to improve the experience for everyone, because they're going to bring those unique perspectives to our class. We talked a little bit today about how people coming to receive healthcare from a different background than the person providing healthcare might not always be on the same page. So this gives us a good opportunity to have that dialogue, and say, "How might someone of a different religion than you, or a different race than you, or a different socioeconomic status than you, evaluate healthcare differently?" So I think it's going to lead to a really rich kind of culminating portion to this unit. The IB summative project, you can see how we designed this and what IB, as you probably know, is all about, is really putting them in those realistic roles. So we're identifying the students as like a malpractice lawyer, the audience would be a medical ethics board, which is really realistic in most major health providers or health systems. And the students have to review a case to reflect on how better communication would have avoided some unintended consequences. So we're going to give them different groups, different scenarios, they'll get to be this team of lawyers that gets to decide, you know, where did the communication go wrong, whose responsibility was it, and kind of what can we do to avoid that situation in the future? The multiple choice examples here, as I mentioned, these are directly from the NCHSE resource that we received for practice questions for them. They're very specific case studies, which I think, as someone who has a degree in health science, a lot of test questions that I saw in college, and on certification tests do include a lot of these case studies, where you have to put yourself in that role, and identify, you know, what did they do wrong, what do we call this, if they did do something wrong? And so this gives our students that opportunity to have that real-world problem-solving element, but also practice with that same format that they're going to see on that certification test. So I talked a little bit about the preparation of the curriculum, other than some observations at Oakland County Schools, and some professional development that I've gone to with the state of Michigan. All our CT programs here have an advisory board, we have community members. If you know people who are in healthcare who would want to be a part of our advisory board, we are always really excited to have new community members. They have a lot of great insight, they, especially with us developing this for so long, they really did have a say in what we're going to implement in the classroom this year. Also this summer, I've spent a lot of time going around to local healthcare facilities who have worked with us, with our internship program, asking for their advice on equipment, and some of the other new and upcoming healthcare trends, just so that way I can still be aware of what's going on and what's current. With our equipment, we have received some community donations, the fire department is working right now to donate glucometers, so test your blood glucose level to us. The fire department, as you can see in this picture, has been extremely generous with our program. They're really eager to work with us, they actually hired two of our students at the end of last year. So we're really excited to continue our relationship with them, it's great that they have such an input, they've even extended to the Addison Township Fire Department, so it's great that we have them as a resource. We do also have some overlap with our previous course from last year with some of our equipment needs, as well as HOSA. If you're not familiar with what HOSA is, it's our Health Occupation Students for America, and it's our extracurricular for students interested in the medical field. So they get to kind of explore a bunch of different career options, there's like 55 events they get to choose from. We have about 75 students in the program, so it's pretty large. Again, not to keep plugging my program, but we'd love to have you come and check out our competitions or anything, if you're interested. The kids are really into it, and it's really exciting to see them get to do such advanced things in high school. We do have to purchase some equipment. Luckily, nothing is super expensive, a lot of it is just getting that quantity enough where we can have more than just one student doing a blood pressure at a time. And I think over the years, we'll be able to accumulate that. We also are looking at like a hospital bed and a patient exam table, so we can really replicate that healthcare setting in the classroom. Just a couple of concerns that I wanted to bring to your attention. Really, the only one I could think of was, we are talking about emerging medical issues, so things like in vitro fertilization, and euthanasia, for example, and we have topics like death, and we do a dissection. And one thing is, today when I pass out the syllabus, is I have a little blurb for parents to just sign and say, "I recognize we're covering sensitive topics, this is a medical course." Alternate assignments will be provided to students who may have had previous experience or are unable to kind of wade through what we're learning in that particular area. But I just want to make you aware as well that there are some of those medical topics that we do cover in that course. My last slide here is just to talk about the field study for a quick second. So like I said, this is what we already offer, this is where our students are going out into the field Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then in the classroom, they're working on their health career portfolios, they're working on discussing what they're observing in the healthcare field. And then because of limited availability with placement, and with scheduling, and sports, like Ken and I were saying, we are trying to develop that other Q-course or an alternate that we can offer students. I've been talking to the National Health Alliance, and they do a lot of certifications like Certified Medical Assistant, and some other programs that we might be able to kind of explore some further options with that. So that's kind of our path for right now. Are there any questions that I could have to answer?
Yes. First of all, it's a great program. My daughter was involved in the program, she was in HOSA, but led to her career choice as a nurse, and she's at U of M right now.
Oh, my gosh.
So once again, thank you for all your work with HOSA. I just had a question. Is it possible to look at Certified Nurse Assistant and be somehow trained to take a CNA exam through all of this coursework?
So with Certified Nursing Assistant, in order to teach certified nursing courses, you have to be a registered nurse who has experience in a nursing home. So unfortunately, I'm not a certified nurse, and I haven't worked in a nursing home. That's why we're exploring the Certified Medical Assistant option, because I was a medical assistant, and I think it would provide a lot of students a similar opportunity, because with patient hours, and like you said, for nursing, or med school, or PA school, that is something that they're looking to accumulate.
It looks, my daughter would use CNA certification, she should go to a special class, it would be great if we could somehow incorporate that into some of the hard work you guys are already doing.
Definitely, yeah.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Is this working with the OSAC program, or are there plans? Because I know Baker College is one of the schools they're working with, a student said would want to win the Baker nursing program, this would be a good segue in.
Yeah, so we do have a lot of OSAC students in our courses right now. We have an articulation agreement. Baker has looked over my resume and everything, and says that students who take this course with me are able to bypass the Introduction to Health Science course upon entering, if they go to Baker. We are working further to see if there's other courses, and we're talking about developing those Q-courses. It'd be great if Baker wanted to, and they have showed interest in affiliating with us and saying, "Here's a course we offer, we'd like you to teach it," as like a dual enrollment option. So we're looking at that, but we do have that articulation agreement, where students get to bypass that course.
Any other comments or questions? Fantastic presentation.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Janal. She's done some fantastic work. It was really difficult at first with the MIP and them putting it all together, and the way it was thought before, and they really took a different slant and different approach to it, and we're very happy how it turned out, and the kids seem to be joining it just as well. We're pretty thrilled.
Thanks, Mr. Weaver, thank you.
All right, I'm going to be going over just three climate survey. Last spring, I think it was, maybe June, went over this survey results a little bit. And this is kind of, he kind of said, asked me, like, "What do the administrators see in the surveys?" And we hadn't quite dived into them yet, and so we did dive into them first week of August at our ad team retreat. We had the building administrators and the departments supervising the quality central office looking at the surveys, and Mrs. Conja, Ms. Conja, worked us through a protocol, a compass point protocol, for making things visible, to kind of collect what we were seeing in the survey results. So what I'm going to be presenting tonight is just kind of some of the feedback, we're not going to go into the actual results, if you've got questions or anything, I can certainly try to answer them as best as possible. But this is what the administrators saw when they looked at the surveys, and that's what the question had been asked of me back in June, was kind of what our administrators said. Now, one thing I will point out is that they have not, they will be going over this, for this next month, at different times with their staff, they have been asking over their building survey results. I don't know if you recall, but there was two different surveys that went out. One was the district climate survey, that looked at the district overall, and kind of had the lens of the board, as well as the superintendent. had the lens of the board, as well as the superintendent, as well as the central office administrators. And then there was also a survey that went out as well, too, that said, "Hey, what building are your kids in? Please fill out the survey with that building in mind." That building survey, the principals will be working through with their staff, kind of going over, getting some comments, and we'll be collecting those back and then bringing those to the board as well, too, and some of the things they glean from their own surveys as well. Okay? So, this is just some of the feedback. One of the areas, they call it compass points because the, what do you do? Needs, excitement, and jump in worries and suggestions. So, that's where you get the compass points in EWS, so that's why they call it that. But this is some of the worries that were identified from staff, from the staff and parent surveys by administrators, that parents seem to be overall concerned, class sizes seem to be foremost in their mind. Intervention support, the level of intervention support that was available for their children. Improved increased technology. Now, some of these could be staff and parent concerns, but we just, I just kind of put them all together. Doesn't matter which group they came from, they're all pretty valid. But the improved increased technology, I do know that was mostly from staff concern. Seems to be a bit of a delay on this thing today. Start times of the secondary schools was another issue. As you know, there's more and more research seems to be coming out all the time about the startup times of the secondary schools not being the best for the bio rhythms of the secondary students. Having now four kids in secondary schools, I can attest to that firsthand. They're grumpy lots, souls are gay, so. The cleanliness of buildings was mentioned in the surveys quite frequently by both staff and parents. The condition of the buildings, now they're not the same. One was the cleanliness, the other one was more the overall maintenance and condition of the buildings. So, it's really great to see that, you know, one of the things that we've been able to do over the last year, or summer I should say really, not last year, but the last summer, is start to address some of these concerns. The roofs at different places, the roof here being addressed, roof at the high school, other areas, I don't know, same if you want, that we've touched on, some of the buses. I mean, that was also mentioned in here, I just considered it part of the condition of the buildings.
Just overall mechanical, electrical.
Yeah. Section of the community that administrators notice still sees trust as an issue, and this is just trust in administration overall, just kind of, a lot of it still stems from the international program, quite frankly, was a lot of the comments. And overly concerned that too much emphasis was placed on that and that there's still, and you know, we take it very seriously, that there's still a section of, or a part of the community that we still have to continue to walk the walk and talk the talk that we've been doing and earn that back still. And, you know, quite frankly, some you never meet, well, quite possibly, but it was still a level of concern that we saw in the surveys that it was noted and one thing to continue to keep, to keep working on. One of the things that was a concern for the administration that they looked at is 63% of staff have never attended a board meeting and don't really kind of understand that workings and how that all works and stuff. So, that was a little bit telling to the administration that, you know, what can you do about that? Not really sure at this point, but that's something that as we move forward and discussing things that we might look at, seeing how we can make sure we get staff. Now, you see staff present quite often, but outside of that, staff release, not attending board meetings and so forth. So, it's something that, you know, I think that to be aware of and try to encourage staff to make sure that, it's a lot of great stuff happens here. I'm presenting usually, so there are a lot of great stuff happens here. We have nuts. I don't know how to take that. I'm just maxing nuts. We also have snacks. And 38% of our own staff were unsure of how school funding works. So, that was also a bit of concern, that if our own staff, that many were not going aware of all the ins and outs of the funding of schools.
They went to board meetings and no.
Yeah, it's, they would certainly. Needs identified from the staff and parent surveys. One thing that became apparent in looking at it was that we need to educate stakeholders, not staff, but stakeholders on IB, what it is and what it is not. The international program many times still is somehow wrapped up, and it's not, and they never were, and, but yet, everybody thinks that's what it was, and probably because they came around about the same time. So, one doesn't have anything to do with the other absolutely, so. And it's more than learning foreign language. So, we still have a long ways to go on what exactly is IB. And I think it's quite honestly, we tell times with staff, from my own viewpoint and having kids in the district, sometimes IB is used as a reason for to do certain assignments, and it certainly has no bearing on that assignment. So, sometimes like, like everybody, we try to blame things on others outside of ourselves, I think. So, I think we've got a lot of work to do there. Educate staff on the use of data, both school and the classroom level, school meaning for the school improvement plan, and also the classroom level, how to use that data better. Administration saw this as a need, as many of the, still quite a few comments in, "Why so much data?" Well, that data should be driving your instruction from your assessments and so forth in that connection, and so we need to kind of submit that. While the teacher instinct or gut feeling, whatever you want to call it, is very valid as well, too. It's, you know, I always use the example, "How long would you go to a doctor that never ran any tests? And all they did was go off their gut instinct? You wouldn't be with that doctor very long." And it's the same thing with teachers as professionals. While that instinct or that innate nature that you may have as a teacher to understand kids and that is very valid and is desirable and needed, you still need to make sure you're using that data and going by that data as well, too, to make your decisions as you move through the year. Educate stakeholders on school funding, both parents and the staff. Make sure that everybody's aware of exactly what a gift they have and oxygen the fact that we do have the lowest foundation grant in the state that you can get, as well as we generally don't qualify for a lot now their grants as well, too, such as Title I, II, and even our average is a decent amount and has gone up over the last few years, but even that's, you know, comparatively speaking, a little low. So, that is one area that we need to continue to educate staff, but, and to have such varied opportunities on that budget is quite an accomplishment at times, but not to be rested on. Understanding better how to utilize, a need would be to understand better how to utilize technology as an educational tool. That is definitely an area that's not going away and is only growing, and it's an area that many of us as administrators, I think, is, if we're truthful with ourselves, are not as confident on, because we did not learn that way ourselves many times and didn't teach that way. And so, that is an area that we've got to do some work on, is to better educate ourselves and how to utilize that technology in a classroom, not to replace the teacher, but to enhance what the teacher's doing. Suggestions identified by the administration from the staff and parent surveys. Improved communication on district and building improvements. Making sure where all the things that we are doing, both having taken in their survey results, some of the positions we've added, and some of the improvements we've made on the buildings, that we make sure that parents and staff understand, a lot of that has come from surveys that we've done the last two, three years. And that some of these initiatives, such as like the family school liaisons, those positions and others have been the result of either staff input, parent input, and trying to address some of the concerns that we see, not only coming through surveys, but other means as well, too. And then as well, you know, the bond was a, was a big initiative where we really used that survey input to kind of tailor what we were going for in the bond, as well as using Mr. Sarkin's and Mr. Barnes' knowledge about the district and what needed to be repaired as well, too. But really using that input and making sure parents understand, we value that input and we value their input on these surveys and that we're using it for more than just collecting it. Make sure, another suggestion is the whole forums to improve stakeholder understanding of IB. Improved communication on improvements made in the area of intervention and support. Realize, too, that, you know, a lot of that happens at school. It does many times come home in the letter, but if you don't have a child in interventions, you don't realize that we've increased the level of support personnel that we have in the elementaries immensely. We went from three years ago hardly having anything more than a reading recovery teacher, maybe a reading recovery teacher and a half at the buildings, to now we've got anywhere from three to five, six paraprofessionals also helping support in classrooms and pulling kids out, helping with tier two interventions on reading. That's been the main focus. That is at all, the elementaries have been able to see that and able to implement that. So, that has been a big help, as well as supporting adding an extra counselor at the middle school, which was an identified need actually from the surveys as well, too, a while back. So, that was huge to be able to add that as well, too. And also adding and helping support some of the increased numbers of academic lab classes, formerly known as REACH up at the high school. So, making sure that parents understand, we have heard and we have already increased quite a bit the level of support and interventions that are out in the schools. Need to consider PD opportunities for educational technology and how we can better implement that part. Needs to be part of our PD plans moving forward is how can we better utilize that technology to really enhance what great teaching has already occurred. And we got a great resource in OVA, too, as well. And that's something that needs to be, I think was brought up as well, is that that would be a resource as well to lean on. Improve the staff version of the district climate survey after looking at the, really sitting down and looking again this year at it, it came to my realization, as well as the administrators, that we need, that some of the questions need to be thrown out and some of the questions need to be tailored better for the staff version of the district climate survey. I'll take Allen that one. Consider also, was suggested by administrators, a different timeframe for delivery of survey. Delivery of the survey, sorry, I forgot the, and the, and that was really, you know, the time of the year that we gave it, the administrators seemed to think that everyone was just a bit grumpy as the year was stressful. I don't know, I don't think there's any good time to answer a survey. I mean, most people seem to be able to take that sometimes they're answering them, but the information's valuable. So, we're going to try to see if maybe a different timeframe might work a little better and give a little bit, not even say better results, but a little better feel to the survey, where it's not like, I think it was given in like late April, early May, and it's, you know, middle of M staff and a few other pressures and everything else, and they're juggling so much. So, maybe we can find it a little bit better, maybe move it up a little bit before the start of M staff, so that there's a little bit more comfortability with the, at least the staff part of it, you know, as well as parents who are trying to wind down the year with a whole bunch of, usually May's a pretty year, a pretty busy time of the year for activities within the buildings, juggling schedules and whatnot. So, maybe that is something to consider and see if we can get a little bit better time slot. And make sure the buildings are reviewing the survey data. That was also, that was put out there, is making sure that they see, the staff sees us using this, as well as making sure parents know that we're using this data, that we're not just collecting it to be sake of collecting it. Excitement, this is the best part. It was exciting to see the common needs identified in surveys are being addressed in the bond and the staffings of both surveys. It was exciting for us to see that what they were mentioning are the things that we can see coming up in the bond. So, that was really, in the staffing things that we discussed, that we can see that we're on track with a lot of the things and that we're heading in the right direction and we're heading in the direction that I would say the majority of our stakeholders would want us to go. There was high praise for human resources, transportation, and food service in the surveys. So, that would need to be brought out. That was quickly mentioned by administrators, that those three areas were especially doing well. 95% of parents responded with the rating of good to outstanding in reading the district, which correlated to, with staff and parents indicated that schools were trying to live on the mission and vision of the district. We're not always going to succeed 100%, but they saw us trying, and that was huge to be able to pick that up in the surveys, that the parents felt like we were heading in that direction. And we also realized in looking at the surveys, that initial response to the customer is probably the most important response that they will get, even more so than maybe the one that answers their question or answers their concern, is how are they greeted? How are they serviced in a sense, when they first have that question and they first walk in your door? That customer service approach, even if they get the answer that they needed or their situation resolved, it's how they were treated right from the get-go that leaves that lasting impression, and it's important for us to, to really emphasize that with our staff. And we think we do a really good job, matter of fact, with several individuals that you can see are at that point of entry for communication, either for parents or for staff, that really got high praises in the service. So, it was really exciting to see, and it helped reinforce that message that we've already been trying, and Mr. Bron is really pushed hard on pushing forward in that customer service response is so important, especially that first one. Yeah, if you got, sorry, I'm going through this kind of quick.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ken. With the 95% up on the board, I just thought I would ask, can you remind us what percent of the population we're talking about, what percent of staff and parents actually responded to the survey?
We had six, well, it's kind of hard to say. I mean, it's 628 parents responding. So, that's a pretty good response out of, you figure how many families we probably have in the district offhand, I would say probably about 4,000.
Families.
Roughly around 3,500 to 4,000. So, yeah, so if you look at it, like I have four in my family, so I take up four kids out of that. So, roughly around, I think, 3,500 families in the district or so. So, 628 can get responses from 628 households. Now, we can't tell if like two parents filled it out or not, but if you just kind of say roughly, that that's, that's not bad. It's enough, statistically, definitely enough to warrant to say that these are valid survey results.
Okay, so when you say 95%, 95% of those who participated?
In the survey.
Just to be clear.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Next steps. Schools, like I said earlier at the beginning, will, to review the building survey results with staff, and so we're looking forward to hearing what they've got on, with those questions. Collect feedback from the principals once that's done, and so that'll probably be in October, that I'll be coming back with that presentation. Continue to incorporate survey feedback into the strategic plan. Like I said earlier, that was pretty obvious, it was obvious to us, we could see that it was in there, but we want to make sure that we're articulating that, but also making sure that we continue to, that parents see us using this data. It's so important. People get frustrated when they give their opinion and they don't feel like they're listened to. They don't necessarily always have to see their suggestion or their input being necessarily acted upon, but long, at least they know that yes, they are taking it and they are using it. I think most people are pretty good at that point, if you at least consider my suggestion or opinion. And improve the staff version of the district climate survey. So, that's kind of the, the next step I see in the immediate future as we move forward. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Gray, Dr. Gray's here.
Appreciate the presentation. I noticed in the survey instruments themselves, they didn't focus really on the building principal or the classroom teacher. So, maybe if you look at, redoing that with the parent side? But to me, I think that our buildings are so responsive to their parent groups. It'd be nice to sort of quantify that.
That, and when they do the building surveys, that does have questions about, specifically about the principal, and there's like four or five questions in there, and then there are questions about the teacher. So, you will be able to see that. This survey is more of a vague, how's the overall climate culture of the district? So, you don't really get to see that in this one, but you should see more of it, and I'll try to highlight some of that, and hopefully some of that will be pulled out from their comments. I think it's, it's better to see the comments and the feedback of what people are seeing that are using the survey than it is to see some of the actual data, but I will give you both. And I'll bring, I'll make sure you have the, the actual surveys in your board package so you can see it before next time.
Is on the website, has the district?
I believe so.
And then one.
The website should be there, I'll have to check.
They are. I'll look at the building one. There's a suggestion maybe to get more staff involved in school board meetings. Sometimes the contract might indicate that they have so many evening activities for supervision. Maybe perhaps they could opt out of one of those and one of these meetings could be their supervision.
That's a great idea, we can definitely look at that, that would help to kind of educate them, let them every so often do that, so.
Just a suggestion to your point about helping people understand the value of the survey, especially our parents and also staff. I think as a parent and as a board member, the next time we come out with the survey, if we introduce it with, these are the things that were accomplished in the last year, thanks to your input last year. On this survey, this is the value of the survey basically, and then set a goal. We had this percentage participate last year, we would love to see that increase by 5%. And you know, I keep sitting, I'm sitting here thinking about incentives, which is really sad, we just shouldn't have to offer incentives with everything. But you know.
They never heard.
Pizza parties for.
Oh, I'll.
You know, the, the classroom, the grades that have the highest participation among parents, that kind of thing, to get more people to join in, not that the participation is bad, I agree with you, I think that's really good. Without, especially without incentives and without that kind of feedback, but this is really valuable and I really appreciate that you're doing this, I know it takes a tremendous amount of work, so.
Well, it's valuable here, I mean, we, I do service the, the parents and they are our customers so to speak. Well, it's always hard to kind of look at education, so this is because kids are certainly are not commodities and so forth, so.
Right.
But it is in that sense and we want to make sure that we are providing the best possible service that we can to our stakeholders, so. And one way we know is, you know, by actual enrollment numbers and stuff, but this is another way which we know whether or not we're on the right track, so. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Board members, we jumped to number eight, policy, and we have a rather large motion. As we did, whoever's gonna make the motion, as we did last week in the first read, how about the number and the description in the motion?
So just, just one further question too. The attorney basically said that legally we probably could give away with either case, just reading the number or reading the number and the description, but his recommendation was to go ahead and recall.
All right, good deal, so go ahead, please.
Okay. Move to approve the second reading of policy numbers 2231 for curriculum, 7217 weapons, 7530 lending of foreign equipment, 7530.02 staff use of personal communication devices, 7540.05 district issued staff email account, 7540.06 district issued email accounts, 7542 access to district technology resource and/or information, and 7543 utilization of the district website.
Thank you, is there sport? Ms. Guthrie. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. All right, is there any other unscheduled participation other than the one that I have? All right, Katie?
Yes.
Please.
Do you want me to come up there?
Yeah, would you please just come up, come up there at the end of the table so we all can see you and again, address your statements to me as it's described in number nine and let's hear what you have to say.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Katie Holgman, I'm a Leonard and Oxford graduate, so thanks for letting me speak today. I want to start off by saying that the staff at Leonard are amazing, they're highly qualified, they're positive, they're caring, and really all that you would want to encounter, you want your children to encounter every day. It's not really a coincidence that students and families want to come to Leonard, be a school of choice or district transfer. Last year we had a kindergarten with 29 kindergartners and one amazing teacher. I was really concerned with the ratio and how students will get what they needed. Many of our kids at this age need help with just their shoes, their clothes, their lunches, routine, et cetera. And of course, their educational goals, which is why we want them there. This year I hope that the ratio looks a little better and maybe another class would be added, but there's currently 28 students in each of the first grade classrooms. This is above the teacher contract of 27 and it's above the targeted 25 students in a class. There's a lot of research and linkage between student achievement and class size and Oxford's known for their high quality education and I hope you'll consider adding a third section of first grade at Leonard. This would not only give the ability for kids to grow educationally, but also for those classrooms to grow with students moving, moving into the district during the year. Last year we added probably, I think, at least two or three kids to each classroom over the year, so I'm really concerned that we may get to January and need to add another section of third grade in the midst of them having a relationship with their teacher and their education. So, and I also want to thank, there's a lot of parent support from Leonard and also our principal and I just appreciate you letting us speak here today. Any questions or anything?
Thank you for coming. Is that the only grade where you are seeing this kind of big growth?
Well, not necessarily, would you speak the word growth? We, um, two years ago, we decided to split a section into two sections, that was one, and there was 30 kids total, we split it into 15, two classes of 15. And we, in two years, we've grown that class by 13 students in two years. That same year, we had two kindergarten classes coming at 15 and we debated whether to keep it at one at 30 or split it into two 15s, we split it into two 15s and that class has grown eight students in two years. So we've grown in just those two sections.
Some just over the school year kind of happened in and some yet normal.
Yeah, and a lot of, a lot of the initial appeal to folks out in that area to go to Kingsbury is class size. And when they see that they can get everything that Oxford has to offer and the class sizes that are congruent with something similar to what Kingsbury could offer, they're leaving Kingsbury and coming right back to us. So those are, those are some recent examples of growth. Last year our kindergarten started off large, 25, but not unusually large, but then as the year went on, we just seemed to keep adding, keep adding, and so we ended with 28, 29. So at the end of the year, it was, it was a large section.
Is that your only grade that you have one section of?
Well, we have two sections of, of first grade right now, they're both at it. It's our, it is our biggest class we can come through.
So Katie, we want to thank you. I know that we're looking into some of this and I wonder, Mr. Weaver, if you might want to just make a short comment? Yes, we are aware of the situation at Leonard's first grade, we're aware. We did temporarily ask Paul to station a bear to help out with those two rooms right now for the, for the time being. As we look at numbers as you see, you know, what is written down as enrollment is not always the case when the school year starts, so we have to make sure, because we have to be, obviously we want to do what's best for the kids, at the same time we've got to be prudent with resources, we've got a lot of needs across the district. So we are monitoring Leonard's situation currently right now, we're aware of a couple of others across the district of issues with numbers that we need to keep aware of as well too. And within a couple of weeks, we will be making a decision as to what we're doing. And maybe sooner as well too, so we've got to go off that effect. Mrs. Concha and myself will be going out to Leonard tomorrow to check out the situation firsthand. All right, so Mr. Weaver, so is it fair to say that Katie and other parents that are concerned about this issue might hear something within a week or two? Yes, so they certainly will within two weeks, but yes, Katie, hopefully sure. All right, you agree with that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Any clarifications? Oh, the calendar's exploding, school must have started. Just awesome, awesome, awesome. Final board comments. Ms. Guthrie.
Thank you, I'm Donna Lee. I'm so impressed always, especially at the beginning of the year, it's just so exciting. So I just want to thank everyone for their presentations, Katie, thank you for your question. And Janelle, thank you, very interesting presentation, a very interesting, like crossroads. We're so glad that they're part of our district and just, I guess I'm grateful, grateful to be here and grateful that you're so much good news, great start to do here.
Very good, very good, Ms. Schaefer.
I would want to comment that knowledge is power, I think that's something that we've all heard in lots of different aspects of our life, but it really is power. And I think that a lot of those, the needs that were up on the survey feedback, which I thought was, was great too by Ken, some of your presentations are a little boring, but that one was. That one was, I really.
She said it out loud, oh man.
That one was great.
I heard.
And what I thought was important though is now Julia's power. And when the needs are all, when a lot of the needs all start with the word educating or understanding, we need to find a better balance with that. So when all the needs are about, you know, educating the staff on our finances or educating the staff or on this or educating our constituencies on that, we just need to brainstorm maybe on what ways, maybe we have, I don't know, people come to forums or coffee lunches or, I know you do, you do all that stuff. I don't know what participation you get from our community, but brainstorm some ways that we can develop that better and offer that to people so that, so that we're giving them their power back.
Mr. Bailey? Wow, how do you follow that? If you could say, I don't find they're boring, if you could say.
There you go.
I think you've lived the spirit.
They're my favorite.
I was going to tell you.
Yeah, I, um, great, I, I'd love to hear the progress you're making. Safety is the big issue and the progress you're making with, with every kid there. I know last year when we talked, that, you know, that's, that's something that's very passionate to me and the work you're doing out there is, is awesome, so, so great. Same thing with the, the medical program, you know, that's, again, that's something that's passionate to me. My daughter's looking to go in to be in a nurse, so, you know, us adding programs like that that, you know, can help her in school and add that to her whole sec program and be ready for college, I think is incredible, so. Great job with that program. Couple concerning things, I mean, this, this trust is still the issue. It's, it's a little disheartening to keep hearing that when the majority of the board meetings, we sit and there's two people in the audience. And it, you know, it, it's concerning to, to keep hearing that, but then it's very positive to hear that 95% say we're good to outstanding. So I'm, I'm very, very happy to hear that. I don't find the presentation boring.
I don't at all.
No backtrack. You had some time to talk?
But no, I think we got a lot of great programs, I'm looking forward to this year. Little plug, Thursday nights, the home opener for the girls swim team down in Berkeley, so they're defending the undefeated season this year, so.
Thank you, sir, Dr. Brayson.
Just going back to my presentation, so I hung in there with the grinder pump last, two weeks ago, so, Ken, you were welcome to.
See, I agree with that one.
Just so you know.
I agree, I'm really beating a Sunday pumpkin.
You killed it, I mean, I just beat it.
Just again, great meeting, I had a great time with the football game on Friday night, just a great start. And when you, when you go to one of those big events, like, you know, we don't have an average district, we have an outstanding district and such community support. So many blue and gold folks and the tailgaters and even though there was people from Romeo, it was just a great atmosphere. And I know a lot of our fall coaches work so hard during the offseason, like all of our coaches, but especially those fall coaches right now, so I just want to thank them behalf of the board, how hard, how hard that work and the passion that you have for your sport, so. So thank you all the coaching staff and I agree with everything else.
Very good, I'll, I'll just say that from crossroads, I'm thrilled. I'm so proud that we are a district that works so hard to help out kids who are in trouble. And, and guy, the work you're doing, I'm thrilled, it is exceptional. The medical foundation presentation was fantastic, well done, well done. District survey, I liked that you rolled back, I, and caught us up on some of this. That, that for me is huge, that you guys move a million miles a minute and we just pop, pop in once, twice a month, that come back and give us some feedback, come back, come back and wraps the stuff up a little tighter, I just, I just love. You know, you were talking about, Mr. Bailey, misconceptions, misconceptions. The problem is, is that as human beings, we gravitate to the negative. When, when something's negative, we get loud and we want to be heard, which is fair. But when the dust settles and something gets fixed, we don't ignore that meaning. And so then we can sometimes years later not even understand, right? So one of the things I would like, like us to consider is, I don't care if it's audio, video or what it is, is that every quarter we deal with misconceptions. Things we hear that just aren't true. Things we hear that we've taken care of, right? So that it's, it is a two and a half minute, whoops, education, someone clicks on it and says, hey, no, we have fixed that security system, we have fixed that, we did click that, we did deal with that, we added two staff members there. And I don't know if you ever really get to knock those things off the list, because once they're up there, it's tough to get them. But yeah, how, how do you deal with the misconceptions and the lack of trust on things that have clearly been dealt with and addressed if nobody wants to listen and nobody comes to hear? Right? So maybe we got to keep going to them. That's my last thought. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Thank you, Katie, for coming tonight and our rest of the Leonard parents who are always encouraged and gathered with you, whether it's at a board meeting or obviously with district surveys. So at the end of the day, what I, what I do want you to know is that your input is valued and that we value your feedback, so I appreciate that. Just a couple of comments on the survey data. This is what I've learned in the last three years. It's, it's an incredible tool and you can really make some strong inroads by evaluating that data, looking at it and taking action. At the same time though, I think you also have to understand that you are not going to hit 100% all the time with the district, our size. Yeah, no matter the decisions we make, we always have some people who are in favor of that decision and some that are not. Or we sort of along near lines that I think we have to keep things in perspective and that while, while we still have some trust issues related to the international program, when you boil that down to just raw numbers, you're, you're not talking a large number. I mean, you're a very small number. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't continue to engage our community and try and get 100% trust, but my anxiety would be way higher if, you know, 95% of those respondents weren't telling us, hey, you guys are doing a really good job. Then, then that's when, then I would start to have some concerns. And so do we, do we always want to become better and become our best? Absolutely we do. Yeah, I think I've just come to the. Yeah, I think I just come to the realization that while that's our target, I also have to be realistic with myself that we're probably not going to get there 100% of the time. And so I just, I want to keep that in perspective. And along those lines, I, I really want to have a shout out to our administrators, our teachers, our support staff. We had an excellent teen retreat coming back this year. That's a segue into our, our welcome back lunch. Made it to lunch this year instead of breakfast. And I got just a really good response from all of our employees and that was very well received. And just the general opening of the school was just, was just excellent. And that really goes to the care and the attention to detail of all our employees from, from all walks. Building level, district level, support roles, direct teaching roles, you name it. Yeah, I, I think we've made really, really good progress. And so for that, I'm, I'm really grateful and I have enjoyed seeing our students and parents welcoming them into our buildings. One thing we did a little bit different this year is that instead of just opening day, going to a building, I, previously I would like have to pick a couple of buildings and then, okay, I'm there opening day and next year I have to pick a couple of different opening buildings. We're actually sort of like doing an opening week. And so we're going to a couple of different buildings every day and us being the central office cabinet. And we are, each of us taking a couple of buildings and we're all hitting all the buildings by the time we get through, I guess it would be Tuesday next week, that kind of thing. And so I say all that to just say it's, it's been fun welcoming the students. Some tears by students, some tears by parents, some students running to get away from their parents, some parents running to get away from the front door and everything in between. And so that's been fun. So very appreciative and it's been a great start.
Is there anything in other?
No, that's it.
Then it's a great day to be a Wildcat meeting. Adieu.